Order. Evocation by Mr. Ray Benard, District 14. Pledge of allegiance by Mr. Al Archer.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, as we gather here tonight, we ask that you provide us the guidance and discernment needed in deciding the next steps to move our beloved school district forward. May we always implement a vision of unity that extends to the hearts and deeds of all stakeholders. As Christmas approaches, a season based on love, peace, and charity, let the birth of the Christ child allow us to refocus our hearts on doing your will. May the message of Christmas and the love it brings specialize lives of all students, employees, and families. Keep us safe this holiday season, and let us never forget the true reason for the season of Christmas. We ask all of this in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia's fans. One nation under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Row Paul.
Ms. Babin.
Here.
Ms. Huddleston.
Here.
Ms. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Petita.
Here.
Dr. Brode.
Here.
Dr. Guyot.
Here.
Ms. Boujwa.
Here.
Mr. Tyler Dufresne.
Here.
Mr. Schwes.
Here.
Mr. Plazos.
Here.
Mr. DuPlantes. Mr. Archer.
Here.
Mr. Bernard.
Here.
Mr. Troy Dufresne.
Here.
E, to recognize Central LaFouche School Trojan Lancer Band, state marking festival grand champions. Mr. Martin.
Yes, so we have with us tonight Mr. Willie Martin, band director of Central LaFouche High School. We have Mr. Chris Arnold, principal of Central LaFouche High School, and most importantly, we have some members of the number one performing band in Louisiana, the Central LaFouche Band Members. Guys, stand up. So, Mr. Martin, if you would, please come forward. I know you love attention, and I know you love speaking. Look, I'll just say a couple of quick things. I was fortunate enough to be at Central LaFouche High School for the last three years, and while there, Mr. Martin will tell you that when I had enough of the office, I would go into the band room. And the time I spent watching you guys play and what you guys accomplished was amazing. And so, I will give you the floor for a few seconds to give credit, I'm sure, to the kids, to the administration, and all the work that you've done. So, thank you.
Yeah, we, more than anything, you know, kudos to students, absolutely amazing students that we have here in LaFouche. I want to thank the school system for supporting the arts. That is, for me, the most important thing that we can be doing to get the artistic side out of our students. And my only hope is that we're able to make a double-down effort when more revenue comes in someday to continue building the arts that we've had to take so many things from. So, thank you to the community, thank you again to administration, and thank you to the students and these excellent student leaders that are back here. Let's get on.
Thank you very much, and congratulations again. Ms. Boujwa.
I just would like to say that I have been going to showcase for several years with my daughter, who is not at Central yet, but can't wait to be a Lancer. And we were so proud to be there the night that we finally made grand champion. It was awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Anybody else have any further comments? Thank you very much, and congratulations. Yes, sir?
Mr. Martin, kind of, I guess I could talk about all the student leaders here. We kind of want to say thank you, or most of, you know, we can't do this without you, so.
And what is your name?
Mark Kean, Roby Show.
Thank you, Mr. Roby Show. Appreciate your comments. Two, approval of board consent agenda. A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held November 6, 2019. C, minutes of special board meeting held November 12, 2019. D, minutes of transportation committee meetings held November 19, 2019. E, minutes of land and facilities management committee meeting held November 19, 2019. F, minutes of special board meeting held November 19, 2019. And G, minutes of academic committee meeting held November 21, 2019. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Marion Petita, second by Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Is there any public comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Three, approval of transportation committee recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, November 19, 2019. Ms. Cheryl Thomas.
To authorize compensating bus drivers and monitors for alternate routes. The Transportation Committee approved and is presented to the board for approval the authorizing of compensation for bus operators and bus monitors for alternate routes. The process will allow the drivers completing additional alternate routes to receive a share of the money that would have been paid to a substitute driver. The daily rate for a substitute driver is $100 per day. This amount would be divided among the drivers given the additional routes. This is a common practice throughout the state. Assumption, Terrebone, Jefferson, and St. Bernard, and many others have the process, have used this process to compensate drivers when they are required to run additional routes. This practice will cost the school board approximately $81,000 annually. And as required by law, our custodial workers, paraprofessionals, and other non-exempt employees are already compensated with overtime pay when they breach the federally mandated threshold. So, we're asking that the board pass this to compensate our bus drivers.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Troy Dufresne, second by Mr. Randy Schwes. Mr. Martin, before we ask for comment.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Landry could not be here tonight, so I'll read his statement. "The Transportation Department is requesting to compensate bus drivers and bus monitors for conducting alternate routes. When a contract driver is unable to perform their duties and substitute driver is not available, other contract drivers will pick up the absent driver's students. This can be one to three school buses helping to cover this route based on the individual route. I would like to compensate these drivers and monitors for the additional work they are performing. I would like to take the cost of a substitute driver. A cost the LaFouche Parish School District would incur if a substitute driver was available and split it among the drivers who take on additional students. This endeavor would be tracked through the Transportation Department on the drivers and monitors' timesheets. Compensating bus drivers and monitors for conducting alternate routes would increase driver morale, keep LaFouche Parish competitive, and retain drivers. While understanding drivers and monitors are compensated based off a five-hour workday, most drivers and monitors which participate in alternate routes go beyond the five-hour workday. This also does not take into consideration the amount of time spent traveling to and from the B&amp;L Transportation Yard to pick up a spare bus or to bring in their bus for repairs on their personal time." That's from Mitch Landry, Transportation Coordinator.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Thank you.
Could you state your name and address?
Sure. My name is Lorraine Prados. My address is 238 Highway 654 in Matthews. I have been a classroom teacher for 21 years, 12 of those years in LaFouche Parish at LaPorte where I'm teaching fifth grade science and social studies. I am here in regards to bus operators receiving compensation for driving alternate routes when substitutes are not available. I am in favor of compensating all employees for work performed outside of their normal duties and hours, whether they are bus operators, food technicians, janitors, paraprofessionals, or teachers. While I believe compensating bus drivers for alternate routes is a step in the right direction, I have to ask, are you willing to apply that same logic to teachers? When a teacher is unable to perform his or her job duties and a substitute teacher is unavailable, teachers absorb up to six more students in their classrooms for the day. This leaves teachers with additional responsibilities, such as monitoring alternate students during classroom instruction, lunch, recess, emergency drills, and in the case of a real emergency, all while performing his or her regular day-to-day duties. I believe it would be fair to distribute the cost of the substitute teacher among the teachers taking on the responsibilities of additional students. Doing so would make our district more competitive, retain more teachers, and increase morale. In closing, I'm not asking you to vote no for Agenda Item 3A, because as Ms. Thomas said, they carry our most precious cargo. I am asking you to justly compensate all employees whom work beyond the scope and hours of their contracts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Prados. Appreciate your comments. Are there any further comments? Ms... Yes, sir?
Good evening. After carefully reading the agenda...
Could you state your name and address?
...on Calendue A199 West to Seventeenth Street, Galley Avenue.
Thank you.
After carefully reading the agenda for tonight's meeting, Agenda Item 3A caught my attention. In my 33 years of teaching, which I'm now retired, many other employees and I were asked to take on other duties that were the responsibility of others. We did it with no questions asked, because we were doing it for the students. Did we enjoy doing it? I think not, but we did it. Well, tonight, you, the board, will be voting to compensate a group of hard-working employees, the bus drivers and monitors, for alternate routes when a substitute driver cannot be found. Am I against this? No. But I am against compensating one group and not compensating other groups of dedicated employees for doing similar items. For example, when a substitute teacher cannot be found, often the principal splits the students among the other teacher... Teachers are... Teachers have to give up their planning period to monitor the absent teacher's students. Also, there was a time when a principal was out for an extended period of illness, and the assistant principal had to take over the duties of that principal and her own without any extra pay. When the recent superintendent took sick leave, you as the board voted to pay the acting superintendent a superintendent's full salary in addition to the absentee superintendent receiving his full salary also. Even worse than these examples is the fact that some past budget cuts have yet to be reinstated. For example, in the LaFouche Parish Board Policy Manual, according to Section GBA, there was an incentive pay program for attendance which has not yet been reinstated. Also, outstanding teachers have had their merit supplement taken away over recent years, even though they earned it due to the past budget cuts, and it has not yet been reinstated. To me, I feel they are owed this money. If funds are now available and should be restored before giving any extra compensation to other employees. So, if you're going to do it for one group, then why not do it for all? With the outcome of your vote tonight, you may be possibly opening a can of worms and cause much dissension amongst our employees. If this item does pass tonight, I would hope that these injustices I mentioned would be corrected soon, beginning with the past teachers who did not receive their merit pay when they earned it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dewey. Appreciate your comments. Any further public comments?
Good evening.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Anne Sanamo, 295, Gemini Street, LaRose, Louisiana, and I want to first tell y'all all Merry Christmas and good holiday wishes. And I'd like to commend y'all on coming up with this plan for compensation for bus drivers who have to run additional routes and take extra time in running other people's routes. And this plan, it can work extremely well across the entire board. You know, like they said, some of the other people, your teachers take alternates throughout the day, your office staff, your secretaries, janitorial staff, kitchen, even your supervisors here in the past have taken on additional job assignments as people have retired in order to help. So, everyone always steps in and lends a helping hand. It's not something that we would just let go by the wayside. So, this is an absolutely wonderful idea, but what I'd like you to think about is LaFouche Parish is a leader in the state in guiding policies, has always been. People would come to you and tell you, you're doing a good job, how can we emulate that? So, I'd like you to consider compensating all areas, starting from the top, and compensate all for this time. Find a way to be able to show the appreciation for using the employees, whether it's subpay for bus drivers, teachers, doing that and making it fair for all. I want to thank you, and y'all have a good Christmas.
Thank you, Ms. Sanamo. Thank you for your comments. Are there any further comments from the public? Are there any board comments? Mr. Bernard?
Yes, as a former teacher, I have a lot of empathy for what these individuals are saying, I know. My recommendation would be that it be placed on the Academic Committee's agenda for more intense study, and then make a recommendation to the full board once that study is completed.
Thanks, Ms. Bernard. Ms. Petita?
I'd like to ask Ms. Cheryl if she would read the line about non-exempt employees, which is the federal law.
As required by law, our custodial workers, paraprofessional, and other non-exempt employees are already compensated with overtime pay when they breach the federally mandated threshold.
But they're called, they're called non-exempt. Teachers and administrators are exempt employees, so they do not come under the federal guidelines of being compensated for extra time that they use. But these are non-exempt employees, and they're, we're just doing the same thing that we're doing for our other non-exempt employees. We pay our janitors when they work overtime, we pay everybody else. And these bus drivers are working overtime. They've done their routes and often have to do another route, and that's when we get calls from parents that my child didn't get home till 5:00 in the afternoon. So, that's quite different from, you know, from being compensated.
Any other board comments? Mr. Dufresne?
This isn't a discussion that we had lightly. We've been going through this the whole year, coming up with a plan and trying to figure out a way that we would be able to do this. All I can say is that these bus drivers are going past their hours, and they don't get compensated at all. I am 100% for this, and I'm 100% looking into the questions that were raised tonight, and there's more questions that we're going to have to ask ourselves, ask y'all. And it may take a year for us to do it, because it took us all year for the bus drivers. This isn't something that can happen at the drop of a hat and the can of worms that someone said we were open. If that's the case, let's open it and see what we can do about it to fix it.
Thank you, Mr. Dufresne. Mr. Bernard?
Again, I would like it placed on the Academic Committee's agenda so that we can look at it and determine with our legal advisers what we can or cannot do.
Thank you, Mr. Bernard. Mr. Dr. Guyot?
I think to clarify what Mr. Bernard's saying is that the topic of teacher supplementation is what he's talking about, be put on the academic agenda, not the present motion that's on the test.
That's correct.
Thank you, Dr. Guyot, for that clarification. Any further board discussion? Ms... Excuse me, Ms. Thomas?
And I do understand what the teachers are saying, but when we started with the bus drivers, I attended their committee meetings, and they come to the committee meetings, and they voice what's going on. So, that's how we were aware, as the Transportation Committee, what was going on. I am also on the Academic Committee, and I would be more than happy to hear what you have to say. And I do listen, and I will try to help to the best of my ability. But I don't know if you don't come to the committee meetings and nobody say nothing. So, I implore you to come to the committee meeting that we will set up with that on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas. Any further discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Four, approval of land and facilities management committee recommendations as per meeting held Tuesday, November 19, 2019. Mr. Randy Schwes?
A, to accept a credit change order in the amount of $3,136.27 to remove, replace concrete area in repairing sewer main at a cost of $5,619.19. For additional HVAC in the special ed classroom at a cost of $15,623.90. For the removal of window shades at a credit of $1,948.84. Additional cost of urethane on epoxy flooring at a credit of $2,588.48. And reconciliation of the project allowance at $25,000 for a total credit change order in the amount of $3,136.27. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Ms. Valerie Boujwa. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously.
B, to authorize and advertise, albeit when contract documents are complete, for the new cafeteria project at South LaRose Elementary School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Mr. Ray Benard. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Mr. DuPlantes, would you like to hand vote on this motion?
I don't even know what the motion, how to vote anyone.
Nick, yay?
Yay.
Mr. DuPlantes says yay. Motion passes unanimously.
C, to accept a change order to indemnify, defend, and hold harmless the contractor Edward J. Laparousse Metal Works Incorporated from and against any and all claims, damages, losses, causes of action, and the results arising of or related to the discovery of presence of asbestos at the job site associated with the re-roofing project at WS LaFouche Elementary School. So moved.
Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Ms. Tina Babin. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Five, approval of Academics Committee Recommendations as per meeting held Thursday, November 21, 2019. Ms. Tina Babin?
To approve the Core Knowledge Language Arts Tier One Curriculum for Elementary Education, K5. And so moved.
Motion by Ms. Tina Babin, second by Dr. Guyot. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? Ms. Babin?
I just would like to take a second and thank Ms. Ancalad and Ms. Joffreyon. They did a wonderful presentation at the Academics Committee meeting. They came in, they had a lot of statistics for us, a lot of backing, a lot of information backing the curriculum, and it was very well done and very informative.
Thank you, Ms. Babin. Ms. Boujwa?
I would also like to thank them. I am so happy this is something I am so in favor of. My heart is in elementary, and this program seems to be exactly what our students need to grow, so I am thrilled with this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Boujwa. Any other board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. Six, new business. Eight, to introduce new district staff members. Mr. Jared Morton?
I am happy to be introducing Mr. Jared Brode, who is our new safety manager. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm excited for this opportunity. I look forward to working with each of you.
Thank you, Mr. Brode.
B, to continue the date, time, and place of regular meetings for 2020, the first Wednesday of every month at 7:00 PM in the school board office in accordance with policy VC, meetings and weigh this policy for the month of January, setting the date for the Advisory Committee meeting for Monday, January 6, 2020, and the regular board meeting Wednesday, January 8, 2020, second Wednesday of the month. Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Valerie Boujwa, second by Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Is there any public discussion? Any board discussion? If not, we'll vote. Motion passes unanimously. C, to recognize board members who have completed hours training and instruction for 2019 in accordance with Act 705. Mr. Jared Morton?
At this time, I'd like to recognize our board members who have participated in board member trainings and have successfully completed the required minimum of six hours of training for 2019 in accordance with Act 705, LRS And have also completed the required hours of ethics training in accordance with Act 3, Louisiana Statute 42, 117. Ms. Tina Babin, 7.5. Ms. Brooke Huddleston, 12.5. Ms. Cheryl Thomas, 10.5. Ms. Marion Petita, 12.5. Dr. Mary Brode, 10.5. Dr. Dennis Guyot, 10.5. Ms. Valerie Boujwa, 10.5. Mr. Tyler Dufresne, 12.5. Mr. Randy Schwes, 12.5. Mr. Eric Plazos, 8.5. Mr. Clyde DuPlantes, 7.5. Mr. Al Archer, 10.5. Mr. Ray Benard, 12.5. Mr. Troy Dufresne, 12.5.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. D, to consider making announcement of intent of the board to call for an election. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Randy Schwes, second by Mr. Tyler Dufresne. Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am. Announcement of public meeting. Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Wednesday, January 8, 2020, at 6:00 PM at its regular meeting place, the Parish School Board Office, 805 East Seventh Street, Simcoe, Louisiana, the Parish School Board of the Parish of LaFouche, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held in the Parish of LaFouche to authorize the levy of a sales and use tax.
Any public comment? Any board comment? Any board comment? If not, we'll vote. Hand vote. Everybody in favor? Motion passed unanimously.
If you don't mind, I'd like to recognize Mr. Jason Akers. Jason is from Foley and Udell. They're the attorneys that are guiding us through this process. I'd just like to introduce the board to Mr. Akers and thank them for their services we guide through this process toward a may election. Thank you and see you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Akers. To consider request for Brooke Huddleston to step down as President and take appropriate action. Do I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Al Archer, second by Ms. Mary Petita. Based on the, um, sensitivity of the issue, I'm gonna turn the gavel over to Ms. Mary Bro and allow her to conduct the, uh, public comment and board comment.
I'm gonna first read the Policy on Public Participation in its full form. It is the policy of Lafouche Parish School Board to conduct all meetings in full view and with welcome participation by the public. A public comment period shall be held before any vote is taken on a motion made in reference to an agenda item or before the next agenda item is introduced for non-action items. Members of the public who wish to speak on agenda items at a board committee meeting may do so by: A, completing a public comment card and submitting it to the official reporter prior to any action being taken on the agenda item or before the next agenda item is introduced for a non-action, for non-action items. Speakers shall be recognized in the order in which cards are submitted following the initial discussion by the board. Members of the public may also choose to express support or opposition without wishing to speak through the public comment card. B, when an individual has been recognized to speak on an agenda item, that individual shall limit his or her comments to matters that are strictly relevant to the agenda item. The President or designee reserves the right to stop any comments when deemed necessary. There shall be a five-minute, ten-minute for committee meetings time limit imposed on any speaker or group. D, any member of the public wishing to speak who has not submitted a public comment card will be offered the opportunity to speak before a vote is taken. If the agenda item does not require a vote, i.e. action items, members of the public wishing to speak shall be allowed to do so by the presiding officer conducting the meeting prior to moving to the next agenda item during a final call for public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak then should stand and walk to the front of the board. Once recognized, members of the public shall state their name, address, and then proceed to give public comment. For more information regarding public participation at Lafouche Parish School Board and Committee Meetings, please review LPSB Policies, BCBI, and BBC, available online. So the agenda item, consider a request for Brooke Huddleston to step down as President and take appropriate action and we will open that to public comment.
Dr. Bro, I mean, we'll go with blue cards first.
Oh, yes. Do we have blue cards?
We have blue cards.
We have them.
Okay, I had a comment I'd like to add. Go first.
Yes.
May I stand?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. First of all, I'd like to thank the good luck of me being here tonight and fellowship with the rest of you and we hope that this meeting's successful and wish you a safe trip home. Dr. Louis Viron, um, is a great leader. He, great leadership to this district as well as this board. He was also successful in getting the tax renewal and he did a great job with that as well. So I want to thank him for all of his, had he's done and continue to do for this district. Mr. Morton, I want to thank you for accepting the challenges of this office. It's a very challenging session. Lot of issues take place day in and day out and we're very much aware of that, but I do appreciate you for taking on the challenge and carrying out the mission of this district. And so far, so good, so continue, uh, that work and I'll be able to assist you any way I can. Thank Ms. Quinn for holding the office together. A lot of things goes on in that office, a lot of activities that's essential to the district operation and the success. So thank you again for your professionalism, accountability, and efficiency. And the same goes for Ms. Moon and Mr. Gager who also sits there and is very instrumental in the success of these meetings such as tonight, so I want to let you know that your work does not go.
The agenda item is to consider a request for Brooke Huddleston to step down as President, so please.
Yes, I'm leading into it.
Please stick to that item.
Thank you, I'm leading into it. Thank you. As former board president, I can testify that this board has witnessed, witnessed a lot of unforeseen events during the first year of this administration. During Dr. Viron's out on leave, Mr. Morton accepted the role of acting superintendent, repaying two superintendent salaries, board member had to resign, and we had to settle out Dr. Viron's contract and we had to select a new superintendent. As stated before, we can agree to disagree. As former board president of this board and current board member, I come before you tonight requesting the resignation of our current board member, President, Ms. Brooke Huddleston. Based on the leadership shown, I have no confidence or trust in you. I have stood alone before, I may stand alone tonight, and I'll continue to stand alone if needed to do what's right and just for the school district. The board president is the leader and he slash she sets the tone for the board as towards professionalism, behavior, confidentiality, trust, and integrity. I find these qualities missing in your leadership. Staying on as President will hamper board unity, board respect, allow continued criticism from the community, and embarrassment. Stepping down as President will allow the board and the district to heal, regain public trust, move forward, increase morale, and allow us a new beginning slash fresh start. Madam President, the Fisher Parish School District does not lead your leadership. Therefore, I personally respectfully ask that you resign as President of this board. Thank you, President, board members, and audience.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Archer. Mr. Archer and Mr. Duplantis were the authors of this, um, agenda item, so, Mr. Duplantis, I'm seeing that you want to speak.
Yes, ma'am. Clyde Joseph Duplantis III, District eleven, three hundred, Mary Beth, Avenue and Body Blue. Thank you all for being here tonight. I read an article today in its own Leadership and Facilitation Skills that are hallmark for an effective board chair. I'm gonna read it because it has something to do with, well, I might have to stay afterwards. A board chair wears, wears many hats, but two words that encapsulate the board chair roles and responsibilities are facilitated and leadership. Nearly every word and every action taken by a board chair falls under these two fundamental roles. For the board to be effective, their responsibilities must include navigating and developing, developing relationships with the CEO, plus that would be superintendent, board committees, fellow board members, and community at large. The board chair is accountable to all of the above people and groups. The board holds the exception that the board chair will continually craft the necessary skills to meet the needs of the board, the organization, and the stakeholders. As a primary leader, the board chair places the betterment of the organization at the heart of every decision, large or small. Board chairs set the tone for other board members as they steer the work of the board in a collaborative manner. The board chair roles and responsibilities require the board chair to hold high standards of character qualities. Peers, employees, and stakeholders are sure to take notice of a board chair who models the highest degree of legal, legal and ethical standards. Everyone values board chairs who exhibit high standards of integrity, honesty, transparency, and humility. While the whole, while the role of the board chair is an active role with many facets of responsibility, the bulk of responsibility lies in overseeing and facilitating the efforts of the board so that it could do its own work. Robert's Rule of Order gives the board chair specific responsibilities such as recommending and appointing new directors, committee members, and committee chairs. That's just one of the many things Robert Rules specifies. In addition to tending to designated board chair duties, the board chair should teach management and fellow directors about best practices for the board and encourage them to follow them. Experienced board chairs know that the board chair role requires top-notch impersonal communication skills for navigating relationships with management, the board, committees, and the community. As an elected official of District eleven, I have a responsibility to address needs, concerns, questions of the voters I represent. I'm getting ready to go through a few of the topics and questions. Are we, Lafouche Parish School Board, better off now than we were a year ago? Fiscal responsibility. Currently, the Lafouche Parish School Board, under our leadership as we are all board, are paying two superintendent salaries. Question is why? What would be different had Mr. Jiskel not resigned?
Please refrain from personal names.
What have you as President done or planned to do to help board become more cohesive instead of being divided? Remember, united we stand, divided we fall. This board is fallen. This is comments from my constituents. What have you as President and other board members done to positively impact the parish? Look at your choice of committees and committee chairs. You apparently put more trust in newly-elected board members over more experienced board members. Since you have served as a chairman of the Lafouche Parish, since you have never served as a chairperson of a Lafouche Parish committee, what qualifies or qualified you to be board president? Why did you not share with all board members that you were running for board president? Why the blind side? When having the task of creating committees and having to choose the committee chair, why did you consult with the superintendent? I have been on the Lafouche Parish School Board for nine years and I, I have had the privilege to serve under the following Presidents, Mrs. Rover Caldwell, she's here tonight, Mrs. Julie Bro, the deceased Louis Tibbetts, God bless him, and Mr. Al Archer. Each of these, in my opinion, were true leaders worthy of the President for this position. The members of this current board may not see things as I do, but I have an obligation to the public to make light of this happening within our current leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Duplantis. Public comment? Please state your name and address, even though you have already.
Anne Sanemo, two nine five, Gemini Street, Rose, Louisiana. I'm at, seeing you here tonight, Ms. Huddleston, please consider resigning. Uh, there's a lack of knowledge on running a board and the skills are inadequate and can possibly hinder your next twelve months as you seek to go ahead on a half-cent sales tax. The public has asked me, and we don't have representation in District twelve yet, but it's, it's coming, and so I still do receive phone calls and I still do get asked questions. And this has been, one of the biggest things I've been questioned about in the last, I don't know, seven, eight months is why are the meetings so awkward? Why are things having to be redone? Why, um, does Robert Rules of Order not pertain? And I say they do, but they're not always followed through it. So with this protocol call being so essential in overseeing the meetings, I don't want to see a half-cent sales tax fee there. I want to see the employees of Lafouche Parish get what's rightfully deserved. And so I'm asking you not to jeopardize any deadlines, legalities, or anything that can possibly affect all the future of this parish for the next twelve months, and please consider resigning tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
The lady in the room, she's doing, she has been waiting. She raised her hand a couple times.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miney Chasson and I'm a bus driver. I've been bus driving for twenty years. I'm also on the Bus Association. I'm here tonight in support of Brooke. I'm here to steep up her strengths and her accomplishments that she has done for us in transportation. A, a transportation department that has been struggling. There are many here in this room tonight that have attended transportation meetings in the past. I have been a part of the Transportation Committee for fifteen years and I can honestly say that in the past, bus drivers have felt unimportant, not heard or listened to, at times not even appreciated or needed. We had phone calls and emails that were never returned by the past board members. Since Brooke has become our President, we have, we feel she truly is concerned with our needs and issues. She hears our concerns and treats us as a vital part of the parish and school system. She makes time for us and it is felt that she truly cares and respects us as service providers for this district. She also has made us feel as drivers, we are very important and are valued in this school system. She understands that each position in our school system plays a vital part, no matter how small the job might be or the title might be. As a committee, when we bring up issues or concerns to her, she does her very best to follow through with whatever we request or need. Her priority is our students and the employees of Lafouche Parish. Brooke is someone we look up to and we are thankful that she represents us as President of the Lafouche Parish School System. So Brooke, thank you for your service. And I also would like to take this opportunity to thank the board. A lot of people, I don't know their names, but thank you for helping. You were not even on Transportation Committees and you stood up for the Transportation Department. You want what's best for our students of Lafouche Parish, so thank you. And I would like to personally thank my school board rep, Ms. Tina Babbin. I appreciate you. So, you know, let's all work together. Let's, let's make this school system a better school system, but we need to do it together. We all need to fit the puzzle and be a part and work together. Even if you're a little bitty person on the bottom of the totem pole to the highest, we all have to work together. So Merry Christmas to all of you. Let's work together.
Thank you, Ms. Chasson. Please state your name and address.
Wondering I, Irwin, eight forty East First Street, here in Tibbetts. I will just, um, again, thank everybody that's on the board. It's, it's been a really tough, um, recent history and I think you have to move forward. And by moving forward, I don't see why there's another thing that you want to bring forth as a board for dissenters. And that's what this feels like. I mean, I have to sit there and say, it's a tough role that each of you have gone through, but if, you know, if tonight's professionalism in running a meeting is any indication, I'm gonna give kudos to Ms. Huddleston. It went through very smoothly. It went through professionally. It was followed. And so I question as to why this was brought up now. And it, you have to go forward. We've got a great school system, right? It's a tough job and I have to say that I see Ms. Huddleston in the paper at, at all the award ceremonies, at things that you want. Your, uh, your board president representing you. And so I, I say, no, don't resign. Stay, stay in and please, board, start working together. Uh, we don't need any more, um, negative negativity at this board or this school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name's Archie Chasson, two fourteen Mar Drive, Lockport, Louisiana. I guess I'm here in dual role, one as the sitting President of Alumni Federation of Nicholas State University, but also more recently as your new Lafouche Parish President-Elect. Brooke and I have been colleagues for the last several years, uh, growing up together in the Alumni Federation, uh, growing through the ranks of the board and the executive board, um, her serving as the President-elect and soon to be taking over as President. So thank you, first of all, for doing that. I'm ready to go. But you know, we ran a campaign- But, you know, we ran a campaign about setting a new standard in parish politics, and I think that begins here tonight, where we set a standard. And Brooke, I stand with Marguerite and some others in this room, and I ask you to stay the course and do not resign. You know, we have had some troubles in the school system the last year, and I think she has handled it with grace and eloquence, and we don't demand perfection of our students or our school system. I'm the proud father of two young girls in Lockport, Louisiana. We don't demand perfection. We demand excellence, and that's what she's brought to this board. So I ask you to stand behind her, come together, and let's begin to set a new standard parish-wide, not just in parish government. And we have some serious issues facing this parish over the next four years. We talk about taxes and local tax reform, and we're beginning down that process. We began it today with some meetings at LSU and Dr. Jim Richardson. And there are two people in this room who I know are going to be very supportive of that issue as we go forward in LaFouche, and there are not two people that I'd rather work with than Mr. Martin and Ms. Huddleston in that effort as we begin to reform our tax system and not only get teachers what they deserve, but all the citizens of LaFouche what they deserve. So Brooke, stay the course. We're proud of you, and thank you. Have a very merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Andrea Renee Brinkley. My address is 1706 Lynn Street, Tibod, Louisiana. And I'd like to thank you all. I've attended a few school board meetings. I'll be honest, I am not a regular attendee. I know some of them personally. I've read about some of you. I know the job that you do. You take it very seriously, and my hope is that if we are all truly committed to the well-being of our students, they're not just my children, they're my neighbor's children, they're your children, perhaps your grandchildren, it's almost unfortunate to see this even happening tonight. Because, you know, my thought would be, when you started your prayer, and one of the things that you said, you talked about working together. And then I see things like this happen, and I wonder, as a former president, how many times did you encourage? How many times do you show grace to each other? You know, I look to you, if you're going to be the leaders that set the example, that show teachers and educators how to act, to perhaps teach our children how they should perform, it starts with you. And, you know, I've known Brooke for years. I am here to stay on her behalf, but you know what? I'm going to be the friend that tells you, you better not resign. You better not think about giving up. You better not listen to the naysayers, because you know what? At the end of the day, if we were all judged that the measure of who we are is the sum of our mistakes, shame on us. Shame on us if that's how we look at people. And you know what? I'm not about to say you made a mistake. I think this board had some very tough decisions to make, some very unfortunate things, and you brought up Louis. I'm not sure what the whole story was. I'm really glad I don't know all the details, because you know what? It's not my business to know all the details. I know Louis is a very nice man, and I don't know what happened to him, but I pray for him. I hope that whatever the situation is, how can we blame somebody? You know, why don't we maybe stop and think, what can we offer him, whatever the course he might be on now, in some way or some support? But I came to stand...
Let's get on topic.
I'm sorry.
So thank you.
No problem. I apologize. Just a story of a couple of y'all too. But anyway, nonetheless, and you're right, this is not about him. I think he's a phenomenal man, so this is not about him, but he brought it up, so I thought maybe had something to do with this. I'm not sure. So anyway, nonetheless, my message and my statement is simple. Be what you say you are, board. Be what you should be, an example to all of us, and I'm not saying you're not, I'm just going to encourage you to do so. Be a team. Show grace. Show kindness. Work together. Offer suggestion. Offer support. I mean, what do you think this looks like to everybody? What do you think it looks like that you would make such a request, you know? And so I just encourage you, I thank you for the example that you have set. The person that I know you to be, you offer the very best that you are to everything that you do, and I think that is phenomenal. And at the end of the day, when you lay your head on your pillow, know that you have done everything you can possibly do, and we may not please everybody, but thank God we can stand on the fact that we did the very best that we can. So I encourage y'all, just work together. I know things will not always be perfect. There have been some very difficult things. Like I said, the only thing I can do is see what I read in the newspaper. That's all I have. Some of you I know personally, and we can talk, and I think y'all are phenomenal people. And even for the ones that I don't know, I'm sure you're pretty awesome if you got elected. You know, so I mean, I think, I'm sure you are. I'm sure you're great people, and I hope that you're committed and you did this because you really wanted to keep in mind the children in our parish. And here we are, talking about things that has almost seems like we've just gotten our mind off of what we came here to and what the mission is. So anyway, thank you for your time. I wish you guys the very best. I know the jobs that you have are not easy. I love teachers. So any teachers in here, I just appreciate the job that you do because I know what it's like to love a child, and they don't have to be yours to love, and so I know that you dedicate your life and your life space, your time, your heart space to what you do, and I think it's outstanding. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, everyone. Constance Williams Johnson, and I'm excited to be here. I want to say to the interim superintendent, good evening, to the board and to administration and everyone assembled tonight. I am very honored to be here because of the mere fact that I was a board member, and I well understand serving and leadership is not easy. But as I listen first to Mr. Archer and all the others before me, we cannot serve on any board when we forget the centerpiece of the board, the students. The students. I am so pleased and proud to see the students here tonight. Who decided differences? I heard so many personal reasons, but I didn't hear anything that was truly, truly a reason to ask for Ms. Brooke's resignation. Political and personal does not work in a school system. I know. I know how I felt when that last tax did not pass. I was angry, and I think I expressed that, because we could have done a better job in terms of doing as a unified board and administration and system, and we did not. And I say we did not because I am, like everyone here, as a part of this community. Much I could have said, but much has been said, and I really appreciate everything that was said. But your personal reasons and your politics need to be pushed aside. Stay focused. I support you, Brooke, because as a new leader, it's not easy. New parish president, we are all going to make mistakes, and the one thing to remember, no one is perfect. Thank you, and God bless you, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Ms. Constance. Any further public comment? Please state your name and address again.
Again, Calvin Dewey, 199 West 217, Galliano, Louisiana. I debated whether to come up here and speak or not, but I've seen and I've heard too many things, not elaborate on it, so this is what I'm going to be talking about tonight. Over the past year, I have noticed many actions of the president to be very questionable. Although I have never made reference to anything, many members of the community have asked me, what kind of school board president do we have? And they gave me reasons, and I am not going to tell them tonight because it's not things that I should be repeating.
Mr. Calvin, let's please keep it to your thoughts and words.
It is my thoughts and words. It's people that approach me that is not hearsay. When somebody approaches you...
It's for your comments.
When somebody approaches you and tells you something that is not hearsay, I beg to differ. Although, sorry. It's one thing for members of the community to question the actions of the president, but it seems far more serious when some members of her onboard are asking her to step down. As president of the board, one should always act professionally. This is not always done. There was a situation where a lengthy discussion on a certain topic took place. This was at one of the early board meetings of the year, and at the end of the discussion, President Brooke Huddleston singled out a board member and said, "You got all that? And if you don't believe me, go back and look at your January or February meeting." And it didn't sound to me like it was said in a joking manner. I have also noticed that at times, the president seems to be very disorganized, so much that the vice president has to get her back on track. In addition, Robert's Rules of Orders are sometimes not followed, and someone else has to redirect her so that she can correct the matter at hand. If the board decides not to ask her to step down, then I respectfully suggest that she studies Robert's Rules of Orders, and she spends extra time to prepare for the proper and organized conduction of the meetings. Maybe a superior past president should even give her a few pointers on what's proper and professional and what's not. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Please state your name and address.
Julie Broke. I live at 160 St. James Street in Gaines. Good evening, board members, audience, and those in the public watching while I stream. I'd like to read a quote from George Washington, which says, "Truth will ultimately prevail where there is pains taken to bring it to light." I was asked to represent by some constituents of the parish, the central area, and especially District 9. People were contacting me and stopping me and the public. The community strongly believes that Brooke Huddleston needs to step down as president of the board.
Again, Ms. Broke, let's keep it to your...
Her name is in the agenda item. Leadership is defined as the act of leading a group of people or an organization, the state or position of being a leader. Example, a change of leadership has become desirable. According to Susan Ward, what is leadership? The art of motivating a group of people to act towards a common goal. Most important quality, honesty. Wise leaders are not afraid of communicating the truth to their people. Honesty is about being truthful, having integrity, and building trust. Good leaders are impartial. It seems that you have none of these qualities. Ninety-nine percent of the LaFouche Parish board presidents before you have successfully achieved the steps of becoming a president. Number one, you are elected to the board. Number two, you are assigned a chairperson of a committee. Number three, you were elected by peers to the advisory committee. Number four, you were elected by peers as vice president. And number five, finally, you are elected as president. You have skipped steps two, three, and four. You were never chosen as a chairperson of any committee by the presiding president. You were never elected by your peers to the advisory board, and you were never elected by your fellow board members as vice president. Possibly, you did not have the quality skills to serve in these capacities. Instead, you seem to have blindsided new board members to vote you in this position. If many of the members would have done any kind of research, which they should have, they would have seen that you never served as a chairperson, you never served on the advisory board, and you never served as vice president. Shame on those who didn't do their research. It almost seems like the good old boy system, which is not a good thing. Then you took season and experienced chairmanships and members and put them with ones with no experience. Every time you skipped or jumped a step, you gained no experience or no leadership skills, which it seems there is a lacking for. You are not the leader that this district needs or wants. This board has been in chaos and disarray since you were elected. You talk a good game, but the public sees through it. Where is the transparency? Where is the honesty? Where is the leadership skills? I don't think they're anywhere to be found. We are attending, and we are watching meetings. There is definitely a lack of Robert's Rules of Order, which the school board has adopted to follow. Your mistakes are very apparent and too many to count. People think that this is not the portrayal or qualities of a leader in action, attitude, or in appearance. Again, the public, the people, the constituents believe you lack professionalism and leadership skills. Please step down. This parish will not flourish or move forward as long as you are president. It seems you are not qualified for another year of office. People have told me they will not vote for the tax as long as you are president. This would be detrimental, not only to the teachers, but to the entire system. And it seems that some of you were thinking about abstaining. Why? Do you not want to make a public vote? You might say it will divide the board, but guess what? It is already divided and has been for a long time. If you abstain means you are not doing your job as a board member, and you are not representing your constituents. In tough times, you must make tough decisions, as you were elected to do so. All of this comes down to leadership or the lack of. Always choose the harder right than the easier wrong. We must remember why we are all here, to support and improve educational opportunities for all. LaFouche Parish students and anything or anyone that presents a distraction from our core mission must be addressed.
Thank you, Ms. Broke.
Our focus must be on students.
Your time's up. Thank you.
I've got four more sentences.
Can we finish, please?
Robert's Rules of Order.
Make a motion that we let her finish, please.
There's a motion to allow Ms. Julie Broke extended time. Mr. Archer, seconds. Call in favor, raise your hand.
That's okay.
Oh, yeah. She sounds so sad.
All votes. Thank you, Ms. Broke. Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Any further public comment? Board comment? Any comment from the board? Mr. Troy Dewey.
I sit here and I listen to everyone. I've not been in the school system except as a student. I'm not an educator and administrator. I'm probably the only one on the board without a college degree. Some of the stuff that I've heard Mr. Dewey plan to say is that the newly-elected board members were put as committee chairs. And for that being said, you don't know what my background was. You don't know if I was chair committee.
Are you questioning me?
No, I'm just making a comment as you were saying, that she put new board members as committee chairs, but I didn't know anyone's background here. You didn't know if I was a president of a different board and stuff like that. And I do my homework, and I do my work as best I can, and I count on Brooke to help me in the right direction, as well as I count on other board members. And I think that she's doing a wonderful job. I voted for her as president in January, and I will have her as president this December. I will vote for her.
Thank you, Ms. Julie Broke. Any further board comment? Ms. Cheryl Thomas.
This is something that this board has been tussling with. This is the third time that this was brought to the board by the same two people. So if there's any division that's putting, coming in this board, it's coming from two board members, because it's just two of us that's bringing it, at least authoring this item on this agenda. I have seen nothing that Brooke Huddleston has done wrong on this board. Yes, we are new board members. And as Ms. Broke said, the good old boy system, it seemed like, to me, it seemed like the good old boy system was voted out, because a lot of y'all still don't know. They say the Y'all constituents has spoken. They put a lot of new board members on here. Do we know everything? No, we don't. Are we going to learn it? Yes, we are. Are we going to do the... Are we going to do the best we can? Yes, we are. That does not mean that none of us qualify as committee leaders and it doesn't, chairmans, and it doesn't mean that Brooke doesn't qualify as a president. Because she does. Has the past board presidents made mistakes? Yes, they did. They made a lot of them. Because at the end of this last board they just got off, I sat at a bunch of those meetings. And was it the vision there? Yes, it was, because I was seeing the board members walking out here crying. So Brooke will stay here. She is not going to resign. And we're going to vote for her to stay right in her seat as president, because she has done nothing wrong, and she's done everything to the best of her ability. What you can do is sit down and help us or try to teach us instead of trying to tear us apart. That's all I have to say.
First off, I respect Mr. Archer and Mr. DuPlantis' putting aside an agenda. However, I find no evidence, none whatsoever, that Mrs. Huddleston in any way has been negligent in performing her duties and responsibilities. Nor do I find any evidence whatsoever that she has failed to act in accordance with the board's decisions. Nor do I find any evidence when she serves on committees or runs board meetings that has exhibited any form of misconduct. I feel that, in all honesty, in my opinion, this does not even warrant a censure from this board. It does definitely not warrant removal of an elected official from her position as president. I would hope that the majority of individuals that put her in this position would be the majority of the individuals that keeps her in this position. This has been adverse conditions for all of us. It would test every one of our leadership skills. Let us not fragment ourselves. Let us be unified as we put closure to the departure of Dr. Viron, as we vote the process of instilling a new superintendent, and as we work together as a unit under Mrs. Huddleston's leadership, as we work as a unit for the passage of a tax for employee raises. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huddleston.
So first of all, I'm going to feel this is about the businesses of board. Second, I didn't vote for Brooke. So out of respect for the people that did, I'm going to vote against this. And the last thing, or second to last thing, we know that there were errors made by previous boards. They had to go back and redo things. So that exists. And ideally, if you only wanted one term for your president, then the policy should have been changed a long time ago. And so my goal is in the next policy and procedure meeting, we will bring this up, and then if it passes and the board votes on it, then yearly we'll get an opportunity to reassess where the person is. But up to now, she was voted in for two terms, and I'm going to respect the people that voted her in.
Thank you, Dr. Duvall. Any further board discussion? Mr. Plazos?
Thank you. Kind of echo some of what Dr. Duvall said as far as the two-year terms. I think it should stick. And I will say this, I respect her for taking the position. First off, no one is perfect. No one has been perfect as president or board members. Anyone, I think, could appreciate that. But for me personally, she's communicated, I believe, with all of us as much as possible. I know communication has been a problem in the past for past presidents. And to me, she hasn't done anything wrong or broken any rules or laws for me to warrant, you know, her to be removed. So that being said, I'm going to vote against this as well. Thank you.
Ms. Batten?
First, I'd like to start by saying I do respect this feelings of views of both sides of this matter. I feel at this point, I really do feel that it is simply causing a further division of the board. To our leadership, I hope you view this tonight as a call for constructive criticism to improve and grow. And everybody at this table, I challenge you to a renewed sense of purpose and professionalism, that perspective constituents deserve for entrusting us with the honor of representing them. At this point, I really feel that it's crucial that our focus absolutely needs to be redirected from adversity to the reason that each of you should be seated at this table is to focus on the continued improvement of LaFouche Parish School District.
Thank you, Ms. Batten. Any further board comment? Ms. Portilla?
Yes. Have we had some professionalism problems? Yes, we have. It's not necessarily due to any one person, but leadership has a lot to, does that in the direction, helps in the direction of keeping the boards professional. I just, you know, at this time, I think that this agenda item is not something that we need to look into. I feel that we are just causing more division, and I think it is time to put all of this behind us and move forward. And whether we choose to vote yea or nay, or whether we choose to abstain, which is a right of any board member, then you can do so. And, you know, we just move forward with it. No matter what is the outcome, we will move forward, and we will continue to work for the purpose of getting our schools, our teachers, and our students where they need to be and continually keep them there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Portilla. Any further board comment? Ms. Fuzwa?
I'm always saying that, as board members, we just need to do the right thing. I think that, yes, there are some things that need to improve, and like Ms. Batten said, that we need to take it as constructive criticism and improve on that. We need to do the right thing for the parish, for the students, the teachers. And when I say teachers, I encompass everybody, even Dutch drivers, because they're the first teacher that this district has ever hired. So when I say teachers, I mean the whole parish. Yes, I do think that Brooke not being a chairperson of a committee and all of those things, possibly when she became the president, the power of that office overtook her, and she did some things that should have been done a little different. I feel like Dr. Viron may still be here if had we done all that. But no matter what the outcome of this vote tonight, I think, like Ms. Portilla said, we need to put this behind us, we need to rally behind whoever the president is and help them to be the best president that they can be. And when they do step out of line as a board, we need to check ourselves and check them and help them grow in the right way that a board should conduct themselves. So we need to bring that trust. And Joey asked the question, are we better off than we were a year ago? In many ways, I think not, but I think we can get there. So I will vote for this motion tonight, but whatever, like I said, whatever the outcome, we need to rally behind our president.
Thank you, Ms. Batten. Any other board member comments?
I'm going to echo a few board members myself. I appreciate Mr. DuPlantis and Mr. Archer's thoughts on this. I appreciate all of the comments from every other board member. I think that we do need to move forward. I really, when I read this, I really didn't think that this was a proper venue for this item. We don't have anything in policy about this process. We don't have anything in our board member handbook about this. And I am going to abstain, and it's not copping out. I respect every board member, and we need to move forward.
Any other board comment? Mr. DuPlantis?
First of all, I want to apologize to mothers that's being lost. But I want to apologize to the students who have to sit here today and witness this charade. Today is a sad day for LaFouche Parish School Board that we have succumbed to this. I am appalled and disgusted that we live in a society which thrives off of controversy and ridiculing others. The public deserves to know that this is nothing but one big, ugly, and politically motivated charade to cause division among people. You don't believe me? Look at who has spoke against President Huddleston. These are individuals who lost their seat on the board and now have a personal vendetta against her. My faith is strong enough to allow me to call out this injustice when I see one. You, the public, deserve to know the true behavior conducted by board members. But while some individuals choose to engage in this type of conduct, the real individuals who are hurting are the teachers, students, and other amazing employees who pour their hearts and souls into their jobs for the betterment of our district. And how do we reward them? We cause the scene that you see here tonight. I get that some people are still upset about how previous elections have turned out, but it is time to move on. We should be working to pass a half-cent sales tax to provide competitive salaries that will go, and funds that will go straight to our teachers and other employees. I only wish all of you were as passionate about solving the real issues facing our school system, such as employee raises, better health care, and transportation, et cetera, rather than attempting to humiliate someone because you didn't get your weight. We were elected to run a school district, not fire like little kids. When I placed my hand on the Bible to be sworn in, I swore to God to do my best as a school board member, and I meant it. I can't speak for everyone, but I certainly meant it, and I have that bond with God. There is a quote by Socrates that states, "When the debate is lost, slander becomes the tool of the losers." But the debate doesn't have to be lost if we come together as one united board. We can continue to have unprecedented success as a board if we put petty politics aside, unite behind poor President Huddleston, and do what we were elected to do. Further, we should always show respect for whoever sits in that chair, man or woman. President Huddleston has done a terrific job, and her work has brought forth many positive contributions to our school district. And for that, I thank you very, very much. We can agree to disagree, but when we don't get our weight, we need to move on. We should not be causing chaos. It is upsetting that this is all taking place during the holiday season, which is supposed to be about love, unity, peace, and Thanksgiving, as we said in the invocation earlier tonight. Life is too short for this. So I humbly ask each and every one of my fellow board members here tonight, let us please work together to serve our constituents like a public servant should do. It's time we move forward together. We all have strengths that we can contribute to making our school system better. And new people, I think you have done a phenomenal job as well. We all can continue to improve, without a doubt. But if you can't put these things aside and do it for yourself, at least do it for the 2,000-plus employees and the thousands of students that depend on us on a daily basis. So employees and students, know and hear that I am here for you and I am fighting for you. I thank my fellow board members for the opportunity to serve alongside them. I thank them for their service, and may God bless all of us.
Any further board comment? Mr. Schwes?
Thanks for coming tonight. Appreciate it. Students, congratulations and everything. Ms. Brooke, I support you. Have I seen some errors that Brooke might have done? But you know, to be a president takes a lot to put on your shoulders and stuff. And the comment was made that if Brooke is still at president, there's no way they're going to vote for the tax. Really? Who are you hurting? I just can't believe that was said. But with that said, thank you, Brooke Harris. Madam Beepe? Thank you.
Any further comment? With no more further comment, I think we should call for a vote.
Keep her straight over this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dr. Bro. Seven memorial resolutions. Ms. Juliette Davier, retired teacher, Mr. Al Archer?
Ms. Juliette Davier was hired by the Pushed by School District on August 27, 1975, as a special education teacher at the 10th Work Development Center, known as the Center. Ms. Davier retired on June 2, 1989, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 14 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book. Madam President, I'd like to say that I had the opportunity to work with Ms. Davier. She was a wonderful person, a wonderful parent, and a wonderful friend. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Archer. B, Ms. Richard Dean Washington, retired paraprofessional, Ms. Michelle Thomas?
Ms. Richard Dean Washington was hired by the LaFouche Parish School Board District on September 24, 1990, as a paraprofessional at C.M. Washington Elementary School. Ms. Washington retired November 15, 2002, having served LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 11 and a half years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book.
Ms. Dr. Bro?
Ms. Richard Dean did a little bit of work at W.S. LaFaw's while I was there and worked with her. She was a wonderful person. She had great personality and great humor and great rapport with the students. She was a great student.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bro. C, Mr. Edmund Capel, retired teacher, retired coordinator, excuse me, Ms. Tina Babin?
Mr. Edmund Capel was hired by the LaFouche Parish School District on August 27, 1957, as a teacher at Thibodeau Junior High School. Mr. Capel also taught at Thibodeau High School. He left the system on June 4, 1972. Mr. Capel was rehired on August 28, 1973, as a coordinator for the LaFouche Parish School District. Mr. Capel retired on January 17, 1986, having served the LaFouche Parish School District for a total of 27.5 years. I move that this resolution be adopted by general consent and that a copy of this resolution be recorded on the special page of our minute book.
Ms. Portilla?
Yes, I'd like to just say that I credit all of my writing skills to Mr. Capel. He taught me English, and he was a rough English teacher, but I even took what I learned from him as I went on to get my bachelor's degree and my master's degree. He was a wonderful teacher, a great sense of humor, and he had special nicknames for everybody. And I think of those of you that read his obituary would have seen that nobody was called by their real name, including me, and I always called him Ed Mark. Loved him.
Mr. Benard?
I also add up to the work of Mr. Capel through grant writings and also through evaluations with fellow teachers. And I agree with you. He was very humorous, but to the point that they respected his evaluations of them, and he was professional in everything that he did. And he was such a good, good person. He will be missed, and he was a person that I have a lot, a lot of respect for. We hope that everything goes well with his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Benard. Ms. Babin?
I just want to say that it's a real honor. I appreciate the fact that I was able to share and read this one tonight. Mr. Capel, I did not know Mr. Capel. I was not in school, and Mr. Capel wasn't there. But he was very, very essential and important to many of the teachers that were people that are very importantly, Ms. Judy David, Ms. Celeste Concyen, like just all these different people were reminiscing this week on Facebook and different places about Mr. Capel. And so he made a huge impression on them, and he's the people that I look up to that have made me the teacher that I am today. So just, you know, it kind of filters them.
Thank you, Ms. Babin.
Thank you, Ms. Babbitt.
I don't know if I can speak, but it's concerning.
Sure. Sure. Just saying that, Brooke.
Well, I'll say, there's never shock. I was a teacher at Yale University High, teaching seventh and eighth grade reading, and Mr. Capel would always come and observe me. And if you know Mr. Capel, "Alvin, you're doing a good job." Then he'd stop. Then I'd continue teaching. Then he'd raise his hand. "Can I come take your class?" So I'd sit down and he'd take the class and he'd start teaching. He was an excellent, excellent person.
Thank you, Mr. Dewey, for sharing that. Ms. Portea.
And I did want to say that he was a very spiritual person and I commented today that I think that heaven was very happy today that we see him.
Thank you very much. Let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on the special page of our minute book. Eight tentative dates for future meetings. There were no committee meetings during the month of December. B, public meeting and forum, Tuesday, December 17, 2019, at the Career Magnet Center, 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. C, advisory committee meeting, Monday, January 6, 2020. And D, regular board meeting, Wednesday, January 8, 2020. Are there any further comments from the board? Yes, Ms. Boujwa.
Are you going to introduce Mr. Henry?
Go ahead, Mr..
We have Mr. Henry LaFon here who's going to be representing, I believe, as soon as next month.
It's up to the Secretary of State.
So we're very thankful for your willingness to step forward and fill our vacated seat. I'm sure, speaking on behalf of the whole board, we thank you for your willing to volunteer this role.
Well, Merry Christmas, everybody. You should never give the floor to a lawyer. But I do want to thank the board for the confidence they showed in selecting me to fill this vacancy to the residents of District 12 and to all the residents of LaFouche Parish. I can assure you I'll do the best job I can. And as I told Troy tonight, I was selected and I was honored and humbled. Thank you very much.
We have two announcements. We had Dr. Dennis Guyot, who was recognized as American Association for Respiratory Care Fellow this past month. So congratulations, Dr. Guyot. What an honor of such rare and few company. So congratulations. And we also had Mr. Tyler Duprin, who was selected as LaQube Region 1 Teacher of the Year. We also had two birthdays, Ms. Marion Portea, November 20, and Mr. Jared Martin, our superintendent. So happy birthday to y'all. Come on, Ray.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Dennis. Happy birthday to you.
I found out about Dennis saving somebody who was choking. Was that going on?
Well, Ms. Dr. Guyot, you have the floor.
Well, I would just say that if you learned the Heimlich maneuver in high school or in a CPR class, it works. I had an opportunity to save a fellow therapist as she was choking. She was actually entering the, going to the bathroom, excusing herself, and I was passing to go to the bathroom. She gave the universal sign of "I'm choking," so I went ahead and put her in a big bear hug and popped her a couple of times. And of course, my first concern was that I hurt her because she immediately said, "Okay, I'm good, I'm good." And then, so I went on to the bathroom and didn't think anything about it because, you know, as part of my job as a respiratory therapist, you know, we attempt to save lives every day. And so that was just another thing, but I was lucky enough to be in the right place at the right time. And her son and daughter wrote me nice letters thanking me for that. So again, I encourage everyone to learn the Heimlich maneuver. You may be saving a fellow family member.
Mr. DuPlantis.
Can you please show everybody and this audience today, because it has happened to me, what is the universal sign that says "I am choking"? Okay. Everybody, please. If you ever see somebody doing this, give them a Heimlich maneuver. And I would like for Mr. Dennis to demonstrate to Mr. Ray.
Are there any further comments before we adjourn? If not, we are adjourned.